After 10, we have seven council members present. We need 10 for a quorum. Council members that are in the building, if you could please make your way to the council chambers. We not only have our regular meeting in which to deal with, but we also have a joint meeting with the Community Redevelopment Agency. That is not meant to scare you from coming to the council chambers. So come on down. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is the second quorum call for the council. Mr. Burnson, Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fear, Mr. Wax. We need two of you for a quorum. Please make your way to the council chambers. This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, the second day of May 2001. I'm Council President Pro Tem Rudy Savornich Jr., serving as Presiding Officer today due to the excused absence of Council President Ruth Galanter. There are 15 council districts in the city and we are currently being viewed on LA City View, Channel 35 across the city and are being monitored by council phone. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pajeco, Padilla, Really, Thomas, Wannich, Wax, Walters, Galanter, 10 members present at quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are going to take the agenda in this order this morning. We do have a joint meeting with the Community Redevelopment Agency, but what we are going to do is first take the consent items off of the regular council agenda. Any items that you wish to call special, we can do that and have those items heard after the joint CRA meeting. We will then proceed to the CRA meeting, then deal with the specials, do the closed session, and then hopefully we'll conclude with the meeting. That's the order in which we'll do it because I do believe there are some CRA commissioners that need to be on their way quickly. And so with that, why don't we go on with regular business, Madam Clerk?
First order, approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, so ordered.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number four, a request to continue that for two weeks to May 16th.
Without objection on item number four, so ordered, continued two weeks until May 16th.
Item number 11, Councilmember Padilla requests that be continued to May 11th.
Item number 11 to May 11th. Any objection? Okay, May 11th, that one goes to.
Councilmember Burnson requests item number 12 to be continued to May 9th.
Any objection to continuing item number 12 until May 9th? Without objection, so ordered on that item.
Item number 14, Housing Department has advised that item can be received and filed in as much as the violations have been corrected.
Okay, any objection to receiving and filing item number 14 in Council District 14? Seeing no objection, that item is received and filed.
And item 29, E and F, closed session items, the city attorneys requesting those be continued to May 4th, which is Friday.
Okay, without objection on E and F on item number 25, that will be continued until this Friday.
On the regular agenda, item number two is a public hearing item. It's protest and ordinances first reading regarding street lighting district confirmations of assessments. 12 members will not be present today, so those ordinances will go over a week if, when council votes on them.
Okay, I believe, Madam Clerk, we may have the public hearing today, though. Can we not? Okay, I have no cards for public hearing on item number two. Is there any person or persons in the audience that would like to testify on their public hearing on item number two? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we will close the public hearing on item number two and continue the item one week until we have 12 members, hopefully. We could do first reading ordinance. Why don't we do first reading ordinance on item number two? So Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number two and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Okay, that'll go over one week for a second reading ordinance. Next item.
Item number three is Building and Safety Confirmation of Assessments in Council District Number Nine.
Okay, I have no cards on item number three. Is there any person or persons in the audience that want to be heard on item number three on today's agenda? Seeing none, public hearing is closed on item number three. Ms. Walters, do you move on item number three? If Councilwoman of the District moves on item number three, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Okay.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 11, item number, excuse me, item number eight has two reports on the file. Do you wish to call that one special?
Why don't we? We have items five through 11 before us, colleagues. Are there any specials? Five through 11?
Well, we don't have.
Item 11 is continued, that is correct. Items five through 10? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the rolls on item five through 10 and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next?
And the ordinances are over a week.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, on item eight, there's an urgency clause. I don't know if you want to continue that over until you have 12 members or whether you want to just let that go today? And it would go over for second reading, anyway?
What we had done for item number eight and number 12, I believe number 12, Mr. Burnson asked that it be continued, but item number eight is still on the desk.
Oh, it was, all right. Thank you.
Since there's two reports, we had called it special. Okay?
I'm sorry.
Next, Madam Clerk?
Next item, Mr. President, items 13 through 28, with the exception of item number 14's already been acted on. And I understand there's a request on items 20, 21, and 22 from, on behalf of Councilmember Holden, to continue those to May 9th.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing items 21, 22, and what was?
20, 21, and 22.
20, 21, and 22 until May 9th?
No. I got 12.
So there's been a request to continue item 20, 21, and 22 till May 9th, and item number 15 for one week. Is there any objection to any of those continuance requests? Seeing none, that'll be the order. So what do we have before us now, Madam Clerk?
Item number 13, 16 through 19, 23 through 28, and item number 13 has an ordinance which would be over one week.
Okay, are, is there any specials on any of those items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Okay, those items are approved. The ordinance will go over one week. Next item?
Item on the continued agenda, item number 30 is an item asserting jurisdiction over Board of Library Commissioners action. That was on the agenda yesterday and it was scheduled pursuant to Rule 53.
Okay, council members, this is the item that was continued from yesterday in regards to asserting jurisdiction on the Board of Library Commissioners action. We did have a public hearing yesterday, and so unless I see a motion for another public hearing, we will deem the public hearing be closed, and then we will ask if any council members want to be heard. want to be heard on the findings. Okay? Okay, so the public hearing is closed. I do have a council member that wishes to speak. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Mr. President, I move that we receive and file the item or offer it as a substitute if that's more appropriate.
Okay. What we need to do, I believe, Madam City Attorney, Mr. Padilla has offered a substitute motion rather than hearing the item to receive and file. Would we have to vote on the findings before we consider the motion to receive and file?
It's not a findings issue. It's a taking jurisdiction, which is a 10-vote issue. If the council makes a motion by eight votes to receive and file it, that would be okay.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Councilman Wax moved approval of the item.
I did not hear that.
Okay, well, okay.
Okay. So the ice, the motion that does take precedence at this time is a motion to receive and file by Councilman Padilla. That item needs eight votes to pass. If that does not pass, then what will be before us is the 10-vote item to consider. If that item then does pass, then it's eight votes whether or not to approve the Prop 5. Okay? So Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the motion to receive and file this item and tabulate the vote?
Six ayes, five noes.
Okay, that does not pass to receive and file. So now what will be before us is the 10-vote item on whether to consider the item. Is there any council member that wishes to be heard on the findings?
What is this now?
This is whether or not to bring the item before us. This is the findings. It needs 10 votes to bring the item before us. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on the findings? Okay, this is the last day to act on this item, I believe, Madam City Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, here we go. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the findings and tabulate the vote?
Six ayes, five noes.
Okay, that item is not before us. And we need not take any further action if we deem not necessary.
The previous action will stand, previous action of the Board of Library Commissioners.
That is correct. Okay, so Madam Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, next item would be item number one, which is the joint public hearing and meeting between the CRA Board of Commissioners and the City Council.
Okay. Members of the Council, Board of Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, this is a joint session of the City Council and the Board of Commissioners of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles to consider the approval and adoption of the proposed amended and restated redevelopment plan for the PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Number Two. The amended and restated redevelopment plan is proposed to be approved and adopted pursuant to the community redevelopment law of the state of California. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll of the members of the City Council and the Community Redevelopment Agency?
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Oneh, Wax, Walters, Galanter, 11 members present.
Would you please call the roll of the?
Peggy Moore, Armando Vergara, Javier Lopez, Greta Hutton, Kobe King, Douglas Ring, Christine Robert, and the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. I now declare the joint public hearing on the proposed amendment to the PICO Union Area Number Two Redevelopment Plan open for the City Council and Community Redevelopment Agency. Open pursuant to law is my responsibility as Presiding Officer to preside over this joint public hearing. This is the time and place set for the joint public hearing as specified in the notice published pursuant to the community redevelopment law. This is the time to comment on or object to the proposed amended redevelopment plan as well as to object to any of the proceedings taken in connection with this plan, including this hearing. In a few minutes, we will take public comment, so all those wishing to speak should turn in a speaker's information card. Blank speaker's cards are available for you at the rear of the council chamber, and if you could please give them to the sergeants, the sergeants will make sure that they make their way forward. The community redevelopment law requires that we follow certain procedures in the conduct of today's joint public meeting. Persons making statements and comments are asked to direct them through the chair. All persons desiring to speak will be given the opportunity to do so, subject to a time limit of two minutes per person. The order of procedure for today's hearing will be as follows. One, agency staff will present a brief report on the history and background leading up to the proposed amendment to the PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Two. Number two, agency staff will also present a brief summary of the agency's report to the City Council on the proposed amended redevelopment plan. Next, we will receive any written statements submitted by any person or organization to this hearing. We will then receive any oral comments from the audience. Remember to please fill out and submit a speaker card if you wish to speak. After questions, comments, and objections have been responded to as needed, the Community Redevelopment Agency and the City Council will then consider action on the matters before them. At this time, I will now call upon Jerry Sharlin, Administrator of the Community Redevelopment Agency, to begin the staff presentation. Good morning, Mr. Sharlin.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Sharlin, and I'm the Administrator of the Community Redevelopment Agency. The action before you today is the joint public hearing required by law prior to your consideration of the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan for the PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Number Two. The original redevelopment plan for the PICO Union Number Two community was adopted by City Council on November 24, 1976. Subsequently, pursuant to Assembly Bill 1290, dates for establishment of debt, receipt of tax increment, and project effectiveness were established by council ordinance in 1994. The PICO Union Number Two area was one of approximately 20 sub-areas within the City of Los Angeles which experienced damage during the civil disturbance of April 1992. Detailed planning analysis identified that the efficient recovery from this damage would require more funding than was available under the original estimated tax increment cap of $14 million. The proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan before you today will increase the tax increment cap and further amend the dates for establishment of debt, receipt of property tax increment, and project effectiveness as currently permitted by the California Community Redevelopment Law. Also, the proposed amendment will reinstate eminent domain power, which had expired in 1988. The proposed amended plan contains a detailed list of baseline conditions that must be present for consideration of the utilization of eminent domain as desired by the PICO Two Union Community. Area conditions found through the documentation process are as follows. 60% of the project area's land uses are residential. 28% are office and commercial retail uses. 4% of the project area is in public and semi-public use. 70% of all office and commercial retail buildings continue to require repair, ranging from moderate rehabilitation to extensive repair of dilapidated conditions. 93% of all residential buildings continue to require repair, ranging from moderate rehabilitation to extensive repair of dilapidated conditions. The area suffers from extremely low lease rates, stagnant property values, high crime rates, and severe overcrowding. 21% of all non-residential, non-public-use buildings exhibit vacancy rates of 20% or more. The proposed implementation tools to be used to address these conditions are summarized as follows. An economic development program of facade and rehabilitation funds for existing commercial retail and office development, rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings, and the creation of development incentive packages to encourage business investment. A housing development program to rehabilitate existing and provide new affordable housing for community residents. A public improvement program, including the improvement and securing of city streets and alleys, to include street scape upgrading and installation of security lighting in alleys, and various programs to assist in provisions of services to the community by nonprofit organization, to develop traffic circulation and improvement programs, and to create business improvement districts, amongst others. An outside fiscal consultant was, has evaluated the potential resources, including tax increment, available to fund implementation, and has concluded that the proposed project is financially feasible. All the documentation supporting the adoption of the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan, including the environmental impact report, is contained in the report to council, which was previously submitted to you. The PICO Union Two PAC conducted 89 meetings over the last eight years through which they and the community provided valuable input on features contained in the proposed amended redevelopment plan and the implementation program. All PAC meetings were posted, noticed, and opened to the public. The involvement of the PICO Union Two community has been greatly appreciated. A letter of support from the project area committee is contained in your binder at tab O. The letter outlines support for the use of redevelopment and states the community's continued support for carrying out redevelopment in PICO Union Two. The agency also appreciates the assistance of the First Council District Office, the City Departments of Planning, and the agency staff through the amendment preparation process. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharlin. At this time, are there any questions by members of the City Council or the agency? Otherwise, we will proceed. Commissioners? Okay, council members? Okay. At this time, we will proceed with written statements received, and so will the city clerk proceed to read into the record the names and addresses of any person or organizations submitting written statements concerning the proposed plan.
Mr. President, no written statements have been received by the city clerk.
Okay. The proposed amended and restated redevelopment plan and the report to council will be made part of the record, along with the staff presentation and any other documents we have just received. We will now hear comments from those present in opposition to the proposed amended and reinstated PICO Union Area Number Two Redevelopment Plan. Boy, that's a mouthful to get out. Please begin your comments by giving your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent, and whether you own or rent property within the project area. Please limit your remarks to two minutes per speaker. I do believe we have two cards so far from the public in opposition. If there's any other individuals that have cards in opposition, if you could please get them to the sergeants at the ropes and get them forward, we would appreciate it. I'm going to call you to testify, and if you could please proceed to the podium with the microphone. Bring the microphone up to your mouth so we can hear you, and then you may begin. I have an Ernie or Ierni Gomez and a Joseph Marquez. Why don't you come right over to this one and then pull the microphone up to you, and then you may proceed. Two minutes.
Good morning, President and City Council. Welcome and chairs. We own property here in the project two, and we weren't notified of what's going on until a letter we received that this thing is going to pass. A property might be taken away by eminent domain. And I'd ask, is there funding if you want to improve the property? And it says, there's no funding from commercials. They're funding for only residential. So I told the person, a coordinator from the redevelopment project, what will happen if we don't have funds to upgrade our building, then we'll take eminent domain. And second, they said that they're going to increase the property taxes. The property that we have is our parents and their senior citizens. They do not have funds to upgrade the building, and right now they're lacking funds to even change the facade. So if this thing passes, are they going to get violations for not upgrading their facade? Are they gonna, is the community redevelopment agency going to get more power than the City Council? Because I believe the City Council should be the one who decides on those things, not the redevelopment projects agency. Also, if our funds going to be available or not, because so far I'm heard that there's no funds available only for housings. So if this thing passes, that what's going to get a bad effect and negative is going to be all the people who own property and commercial wise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joseph Marquez, was that you? Okay, then there's another, either a Mr. or Ms. Gomez?
Hi. I wanted to know, do you have a plan already scheduled for what's your plans that you're going to be doing, developing? That's my question.
Why don't you make all your comments, ma'am, and then we'll have staff respond to all of the questions that you may have.
Okay, great.
Go right ahead. Is that the only question you have?
That's the only question.
And the only comment you have?
That's the only.
Okay, we'll see in a few minutes if we can have staff respond to you. Thank you very much. four cards in favor of the plan. If there's any other persons in the audience that have any cards in favor, if you could please also get them to the sergeants so we can bring them forward. So, they are as follows. Yasmin Corona, Jane Scott, Luigi Torres, and Judith Raphael, Raphael, possibly. And if you could speak in that order, and the other folks could line up right in front of, right behind the first speaker to save time. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Yasmin Meadow Corona. My address is 1354 Constance Street. I am a PAC member, but I am speaking as a resident and property owner of the PICO Union Area. I am in favor of the implementation plan with reservations. Instead of approval of a 10-year, I would like to recommend a five-year approval with a progress report and a community review. I am concerned because in 1976, when 14 million was allocated, the project reached its spending in 1994, creating limitations on any new redevelopment. From 1995 to now, it has been really hard to create any major changes. Our current plan ends in 2006, which still gives us five years, and another five years with this implementation will give us 10 years to work on our new and existing projects. So that is my recommendation for a five-year implementation and with a community review. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Jane Scott at 1314 South Bonnie Bray Street. I've been a resident in PICO Union Two for 20 years. According to the Director of the CRA, and I don't remember his name, I didn't catch it, they haven't really done their job for the past since 1975 with all the things that have not been accomplished in our neighborhood. For instance, they're supposed to help us with traffic, and they have not helped us one bit with the traffic from Staples. We don't, I don't really have a problem with extending, with accepting this amended, but do not extend it for 10 years. Five years should be sufficient with public evaluation as to the efforts of the programs. Now, the CRA is supposed to have community input, which they do get and do not use any of it. Our park has been an example 20 years ago. Our plans were scuttled, and they did as they wanted. We also recommend a staff that is energetic, viable, and in tune to the wants and needs of the community, such as Main Street concept for PICO Boulevard, which I understand that Department of Traffic Transportation wants to upzone to a primary road, HPOZ, which I believe is in the beginning stages, adherence of new construction in tune with the community. This community is the largest intact historic area west of the Mississippi River, and there is nothing in the CRA that says that they must use our advice. They only have us as an advisory committee because it is stated in the state law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Torres?
Good morning. My name is Luigi Torres, representing RDM Investments. We're a commercial business in, at 1104 on 11th Street. We are in favor of the total project. I do not have anything more to say at the present time. I was able to satisfy my question earlier than, before the meetings, rather than Mr. Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name is Judith Raphael. I own property in the PICO Union at 1225 I own property in the PICO Union at 1225 Venice Boulevard, West Venice Boulevard. I'm in favor and support Yasmin Corona's reservations. The CRA has been very supportive in the past for the PICO Union Harvest Festival, which promotes community spirit and art and music in the PICO Union in a one-day festival. And I would like to thank Councilman Mike Hernandez, who has been very supportive too, and the CRA and Mike Hernandez have been very good for the community. I hope they will continue to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no other cards, and sergeants, I don't believe any other cards have been presented. So at this time, Mr. Charlin, does staff wish to respond to the oral statements and comments just presented?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don Spivak from the Redevelopment Agency can respond to a couple of the specific issues that were raised. The first was the question as to whether there were funds that would be available for economic development, for uses other than housing. And there is an expectation, if the amendment is approved and tax increment begins to flow again, that there would in fiscal '03 be about a million point one dollars available for economic development purposes, and that would grow to about a total of five point eight million dollars over the first five years of the extension period. There was an issue raised about impact on taxes. It does need to be pointed out that the Redevelopment Agency does not set taxes, does not impose taxes. So the redevelopment plan itself does not have an effect on taxes. With regard to the provision for periodic reviews, under state law, there is a requirement for a five-year implementation plan to be prepared and publicly presented every five years, and midway through that five-year period, a review, again publicly, of the progress being made. So five-year responses to progress are, in fact, provided for under state law.
Are there any final questions or comments by members of the city council or the agency commissioners at this time? Okay, legal counsel, do any of the statements in opposition received into the record require responses by the agency for consideration by the city council?
Bruce Tepper, Special Counsel. Mr. President, no.
Since there are no objections requiring responses, the joint public hearing is now closed, and the joint public meeting will now continue. The agency and the city council will now proceed to consider actions to adopt the proposed plan amendment. Does the agency wish to take action at this time?
Yes, we do.
Very good. Madam Chair?
We'd like to propose a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, certifying that the agency has reviewed and considered the information contained in the final environmental impact report for the amended and restated redevelopment plan for the PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Number Two, making certain findings regarding the environmental impacts of the proposed redevelopment plan, adopting a mitigation reporting and monitoring program, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. It is so moved.
Mr. Hernandez, do you have any motions to make?
Members of the council, I make you this motion based on some of the testimony I heard today, but if staff from the agency and legal counsel, I'd like to move that there be a periodic review every three years of the activities of the agency and report it through a public hearing and a report issued to the council as part of the adoption of this resolution. And so that would require a hearing, a public hearing every three years as to the activities of the agency. That would then, a report would be issued to the council as part of this adoption of this resolution. Is there any problems with that?
No.
I know the community asked for a five-year review. I'd like to have one every three years, if that makes sense. So that'll be part of the process that's before us today. Members of the council, I think that in the--
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite quick enough with the second resolution that we need to make, so if I could ask the council just for a moment to entertain this second resolution.
And my motion will apply to both resolutions.
Also, Madam Chair, will you not need to call a roll call of your board before the council acts on this?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. Okay. So we proceed with the second resolution of the board, and the board could take action, and then we will ask Mr. Hernandez to conclude.
Thank you. A resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, approving the proposed amended and restated redevelopment plan for the PICO Union Project Area Number Two and the report to council thereon, and authorizing the submission of the amended and restated redevelopment plan and the report to council, and report to council to the city council of the City of Los Angeles. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor, please respond.
Aye.
It is so carried. Would you like a roll on each one of the resolutions or both of them together? Okay. In the first resolution, may I have a roll call of the commissioners here present today?
Commissioner Lopez, aye.
Commissioner Robert, aye.
Commissioner King, aye.
Commissioner Ring, aye.
Commissioner Moore, aye. On the second resolution, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lopez, aye.
Commissioner King, aye.
Commissioner Ring, aye.
Commissioner Moore, aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair of the agency. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to continue?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, again, I want to reiterate the fact that I've seen some change in the activities happening in PICO Union Two. And I want to distinguish PICO Union Two from PICO Union One, because PICO Union One tends to abut the Harbor Freeway, and this tends to be about a mile west of the Harbor Freeway is the beginning. And the area is primarily residential. And what I've seen as part of the change has been more community activity, more community involvement, and I think this council witnessed it when we were dealing with the issue of a library that would be established within the boundaries of PICO Union Two. You also need to know that this is, when you look at Pico Boulevard, it's a corridor that basically is part of the rapid bus system, and many transportation improvements are going to be made as part of that corridor. But it's also basically a gateway to Staples Center and the kind of activity in terms of commercial possibilities that exist there. One of the beauties of PICO Union Two, when you have the opportunity to be there, is the historic nature of that community and the houses that are there, and the fact that that community is emerging more and more as a vocal voice in dealing with the issue of preservation. And I think it's important that you note that this plan calls for an active role in preservation of that housing stock and making sure the historic nature of that housing stock is promoted. I also noticed that on item number eight, it allows for more consideration into the social infrastructure of that community, in terms of community centers, in terms of hopefully some additional open space and some enhancements. I can share with you that PICO Union Two, through the previous adopted plan, did bring some commercial activity, and that commercial activities basically can be witnessed on the corner of Pico and Alvarado. During the civil unrest, three of the four corners were actually burned down, and one corner was vacant for, by the CRA, it was held vacant for years trying to promote a supermarket to come in there. And now you have a LeBordios Market in one of those corners, but all four corners basically have activity, and that's commercial activity. And it's kind of become one of the center points right adjacent to Alvarado Terrace, and the only small park that exists in that area. And so it's important that we take into account the need of open space and community centers as part of this plan, and I think this plan calls for that. I just asked adoption because I understand this to be a two. And the reality is, you can't really use the two if you have community input and participation in the decision-making and the evolution in a short time span of five years. Yesterday, I was commenting at our committee on budget that we can't build a library in six years. And the reality is, we're talking about a lot of activity that's going to be happening in a community that's very dense, that basically is residential, and is a community, and it should be treated that way. A community that has needs no different than any other community. I know that it's because of the activities of CRA that I have a greater understanding of the need to deal with a billboard issue along Pico Boulevard, along Venice and Washington, because that's come to our attention through the advisory committee. And I also know that we now have the reality of a community that's engaged and basically holding government accountable. And so with those understandings, I'd like to move the resolutions that are before us. And if I may, I will do that at this time. Actions for consideration of the council. A resolution of the City Council of Los Angeles, California, certifying that the city council has reviewed and considered the information contained in the final environmental impact report, making certain findings regarding the environmental impacts of the proposed amended and restated PICO Union Area Number Two redevelopment plan, adopting a mitigation report and monitoring program, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. A resolution of the city council of the City of Los Angeles, California, electing to receive the city share of tax increment reimbursements from the PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Number Two, and an ordinance of the city council of the City of Los Angeles, California, approving and adopting the amended and restated redevelopment plan for PICO Union Redevelopment Project Area Number Two.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I believe, Madam Clerk, as we do not have twelve members, that we will have to continue the ordinance one week for second reading. So I believe, why don't we open the roll on the two resolutions at this time? And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And now let us open the roll on the ordinance that is before us and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, the ordinance will go over one week, as we do not have twelve members. This concludes the actions for today on this plan. I would like to thank the agency commissioners and agency staff.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just ask that the resolutions be sent forthwith to the mayor.
Forthwith on the resolutions? Very good. Thank you very much. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Item number eight is on the desk. It's two committee reports, and the planning, land use, and management committee report has an ordinance with an urgency clause, which requires twelve votes.
Okay, council members, we do have item number eight before us. There are two reports on the file. We do not have twelve members, so it will have to go over anyway. The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, may I quickly move reconsideration of item number twenty-four? The item lacked the, in the clerk's file, apparently, the amendment, therefore, it is now before, and I think we can move this forward, it's signed by both Chair of Personnel and Budget and Finance. It's largely to move this forward so that it can be heard in the context of the At-Hold Committee on Budget and Finance, and with your indulgence, I would so move.
Okay, item number eight is on the desk for a moment. We do have a motion to reconsider item number twenty-four. Is there any objection to reconsidering item twenty-four? If not, item twenty-four is before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas has introduced an amending motion, item twenty-four A, which would be included as part of item twenty-four, is now before us. Is there any council member that wants to discuss item twenty-four as amended by twenty-four A? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item twenty-four as amended by twenty-four A and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Forthwith, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Indeed.
Forthwith on item number twenty-four. Mr. Pacheco? I believe you also had a reconsideration. We'll hold that on the desk. That's item number twenty-seven. We'll hold it on the desk. Mr. Pacheco is back. Mr. Pacheco, did you want to move reconsideration on item number twenty-seven?
Yes, I'd like to move reconsideration, item twenty-seven. I have an amended twenty-seven A before everyone. It simply identifies the lead agency for the delivery of the automobiles, the surplus automobiles, to El Salvador.
Is there any objection to reconsidering item number twenty-seven? Seeing no objection, item twenty-seven is back before us. Mr. Pacheco has introduced an amending motion.
I would like to move twenty-seven A as a substitute motion.
As a substitute, okay. Item twenty-seven is, twenty-seven A is a substitute for twenty-seven. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on twenty-seven A, serving as a substitute for twenty-seven, and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, Mr. Pacheco? Forthwith. Okay, we're back to item number eight.
And, Mr. President, as a note, there is an urgency clause, so when that is over second reading, twelve members or twelve votes are still required for the urgency clause.
Okay, so we need either twelve today, which we won't have, or twelve next week, which we may have. So we have two motions on file. Is there a, what is your pleasure, council members? Councilwoman, Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think in trying to sort these out, these are parallel and not necessarily inconsistent, but let me explain it at least as best I can, see whether staff wants to comment. A, the recommendation from Planning and Land Use Management deals with a number of things of major sign proportions, super graphic signs, mural signs, and inflatables. The Sign Task Force did recommend this, which is an interim control ordinance, just like we have right now with billboards. And while the Sign Task Force is sorting through the process of all of these things, saying, create an ICO for all of these other things, mural signs, super graphic signs, and inflatable devices, that's one that has the urgency clause with an ICO. The Arts Health and Humanities, and I'm sure Ms. Walters will speak to it more specifically, is really taking one of those out, and that is super graphic, and saying, let's create a permanent prohibition in the code to not allow them at all, leave them, super graphics as prohibited signs. And although I may, and that's a permanent ordinance, the issue that I, the only concern I have with that is that we have recently adopted, for instance, in the Hollywood Entertainment and Media District, a specific plan that authorizes and allows them in that area. And I'm not sure whether or not a prohibition at this time, as committee recommendation B would allow, or would put forward, would allow them in the areas where there has been a supplemental use district created by way of a specific plan. This is, we do want them according to some specific standards in this area. So there might be some inconsistency with B based on what we've already done in a limited location. I am going to recommend that we adopt A, which is the ordinance to create an interim control ordinance on all of these devices, and suggest that the super graphic sign recommendation for a permanent ban be sent back to the Sign Task Force, only to ask the question, is if these are banned, can they still be allowed in certain areas of supplemental use districts where communities have come forward and said that we want this kind of signage? So maybe we can have the staff come up and present any issues that I haven't covered, but I would actually move the adoption of A.
Okay, the chair recognizes Councilman Fewer.
Does Ms. Walters wish to speak, Mr. President?
Yes, she does.
Let me defer to Ms. Walters as the chair of the Arts Committee, and then I'll speak after she's concluded her remarks.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Fewer. That was very generous of you. I'm supporting A and B, and I support B for the specific reason that the super graphic signs are quickly creating additional blight and getting out of control as to where they're being put. I see them in some very unlikely places, or places that I would have thought wouldn't have muddied their buildings or muddled their buildings with these signs. I think that the billboard signs, the super graphic signs, electronic signs, the whole plethora of advertising in the community, in the total Los Angeles community, has really gone too far. I think that some of the signs-- I think that some of the signs are tastefully done, but all too many of them are not tastefully done, and it just gives us an environmental blight that is very difficult to overcome in particular communities. And those particular communities tend to be less affluent communities. We find the billboard signage, the, and all too often with liquor advertisements, the super graphic signs, it seems that less affluent communities are targets for those signs, although they're all over the city. So I think, council members, that we could adopt both A and B, and we could ask the city attorney on B, the question that Ms. Sikowski raises, whether or not this, whether or not B precludes the hanging of those super graphic signs where a specific plan has determined that they are to be allowed in specific places. So I have no problem with a plan that says they're allowed in certain places, although personally, I feel that the city is better off without any of the super graphics.
Colleague, would you like to have staff respond at this time?
Yes.
Staff?
Sharon Seedorf Cardenas, City Attorney's Office. Yes, we could craft a regulation that would prohibit the signs citywide, except where expressly allowed in a specific plan or other type of area.
That's fine with me.
More specifically, where we have recently enacted a specific plan already, do we need to go back and amend that, or can this, could this ordinance allow it where it had been previously allowed with a specific plan, rather than having us to go through a reenactment?
I think that we could craft the language such that it would apply to previously adopted specific plans, as well as after adopted specific plans.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me sort of get straight where we think we are. There's a consensus that we should adopt, so far among the speakers, the interim control ordinance, that's A. With regard to B, it is said we could draft an ordinance that is, in fact, retroactive in application and pertains to those specific plans that, like Hollywood, that are already in place. We could trump the act of the council in creating that specific plan by a subsequent ordinance if we want to. That was what I thought, I just heard you say.
We could, we could craft an ordinance that would allow super graphics signs to, to be allowed in those specific plans or supplemental use districts specifically.
All right, but that's different from having a city council ordinance on super graphics that supersedes those plans, that we can or cannot do.
We would have to look at that, look at the various plans.
Do you understand the difference I'm trying to?
I understand the difference. You want, you're asking whether you could now adopt an ordinance that would not allow them even in the specific plans where they're allowed.
I want to understand what our choices are. Yes, that's correct. And the answer is, we're not sure.
We'd have to look at that and see, but I think that we could, we could craft language to say that in the future, in those specific plan areas, that you couldn't have the signs. But as to any signs that, let's say, went in under a plan now, those would be allowed to stay.
Now, all right, so if we were to adopt sort of a consensus approach, and I'm interested what my colleagues who spoke can think about this, it might be, adopt the interim ordinance, that's A. With regard to B, direct the city attorney to draft perhaps two alternative ordinances for us to consider today. We could make the instruction, one, no more super graphics unless allowed by a specific plan, and the other, no more super graphics. And then the council could, we could consider that item when the interim ordinance and the whole thing come back. If that's what we can do, that'll be my motion, is that, that's how we craft the whole kit and caboodle, and we get it done that way. So I'll move that, I hope there's a second for that. Yeah, Ms. Sikowski, my turn, please.
Mr. Fuhr, can I just ask you, in asking the city attorney to bring back both, could we also ask city planning to determine, in the first version, that is, if they are banned citywide, except allowed where specific plans say so, to have a quick review of those specific plans retroactively where they have been allowed? I can think of only one, which is the Hollywood Media District. But I think having that information as we consider an either absolute ban or ban with exception where it's been created, we'd need to know where that creation has been.
Yeah, no, I agree. The information's very important. So that'll be my motion. Is that a second, Ms. Sikowski, Ms. Walters, to that? Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I think there's some confusion based on what we're seeing before us today, but we had lengthy discussion about this, and let's not, let's, let's understand we're talking about super graphics, inflatable balloons, mural signs, all in one report. And I thought that we had this dialogue in the Plum Committee. Councilwoman Sikowski was there, Councilmember Burnson was there, and it, well, yeah, and then the task force. But if you read the Plum Committee report, because I brought in a motion that is not included on the agenda, but the Plum Committee report has, number three, add new subparagraph three to section three exemptions, saying permitting under a specific plan ordinance adopted by the city council. And that was in there because of the dialogue we just had. Now, I know that certain super graphics, we wanted to basically make sure there was some kind of review process, some kind of control, and there was pretty much consensus that in supplemental use districts where that was what the district wanted, and boundaries were established, and rules as to how they went up went in, that would not be a problem. We also discussed the phenomena that happens at venues like Staples Center and Dodger Stadium, when they have that special event, and they put that inflatable Dodger on their own stadium grounds. And so the question was more of, how do you allow for those things to happen? Now, if they're currently allowed, then, and if we had a specific plan allowing that, like we did when we developed Staples Center, that sentence was supposed to take care of it. And that's why it was part of the Plum Committee report. And that's what my understanding A is. Now, that's not reflected on the agenda item. And so I'd like to move the Plum Committee report, which is A, but I'd like it to be the report, not what's agendized. And that was giving the city attorney instructions to draft the ordinance as they were presenting. And that's why I was supportive of A. I thought it also was inclusive of what we were hearing coming from Arts Health and Humanities. And I just want to correct that, because it doesn't reflect that on the agenda, but it does reflect that dialogue that went on in committee. And so my, my motion would be to move the Plum Committee report for the adoption and creation of the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I totally agree. We spent a lot of time on this, both in the task force and in committee. What is in place now is a moratorium, I guess, an ICO that we've had that is, what length of time does that ICO still have to run? It's 100, was 180 days originally?
Correct. Mike LaGranne, City Attorney.
Yeah, and we gave instructions to the city attorney as to the drafting of an ordinance that would provide for, with super graphics where provided by specific plan. There may be another alternative besides that, Mike, I hope you're paying attention. There may be another alternative that may, we may want to incorporate in there, and that would be that we could, by some sort of, of either mini variance or conditional use permit for a special event or one-time use, or something that could be either signed off by the, by the planning director, or through a, a mini approval process, that would allow for a one-time situation like Dodger Stadium, or Staples Center, or something of that nature. But essentially, it was the belief of the, both the task force and this, and the Planning Committee, that they should only be allowed, super graphics should only be allowed in areas where the specific plan or community plans permitted them, which would be extremely limiting for the city. And to make some other provision, Mike, Mike, I don't think we dealt with the situation of a Dodger Stadium or a one-time use, specific use where we would get, city controller, would you control yourself, please?
Mr. Burnson, I thought we had, because the Dodgers then would have to go through a conditional use permit process, and it would allow for community input in that process according.
Did we have that in, was that in the recommendation that we sent?
According to the paragraph.
So they could be a, can you tell us, Sharon? Was that part of the?
In the interim control ordinance that's before you today, it contains a hardship exemption, so that any of these.
That's all that's before us, is the hardship, is, all that's before us today is the interim control ordinance?
Well, you have an ordinance that's been drafted, and that's the ICO that was in Plum Committee. It has all the amendments to it that you asked for in the Plum Committee. And then B is a report from Arts Health and Humanity that would then direct the city attorney to draft a permanent ordinance.
But does it specify what the city attorney should put in that permanent ordinance? And is it strictly on super graphics, or what is it on?
The, according to the agenda, it's a request for the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance amended that would define, that would amend the MUNI code, to define a super graphic sign, to include super graphic signs under the listing of prohibited signs, and to make any other amendments in the code that.
Does it say anything about?
Are needed.
By, were permitted by specific plan only, or does it say just prohibit?
Under the, the, the agenda description, it just talks about prohibited. But if the council wanted us to, to prohibit it except where expressly permitted, we could certainly do that.
I think that would be the key, and I think there need, I think there, now, what about inflatables? Does the, does the B deal with inflatables at all?
No. B is only super graphic signs. It doesn't deal with mural signs or inflatables.
What I would suggest is, what I would suggest is that we adopt A, which covers the ICO, which is needed. We could support the B if it was, if we talked about prohibit except where permitted specifically by specific plans, and provide for a mini variance or some type of checkoff for special events that would be provide, where a community input would be provided for in advance. Now, it could be a mini variance, it could be a mini CUP. I'm talking about would be rare except, I'm talking about inflatables, excuse me. I jumped to inflatables there, so I want to retract that. Do we have anything before us on inflatables at all right now?
No, only the ICO.
Only the ICO, okay. Well, I would, I would urge that we adopt A, and that we also adopt B as amended, where we talk about prohibit except where specifically provided for in specific plans. Do you have any problem with that, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Colleagues, may I make a suggestion? This is an urgency item, and it needs 12 votes. We do not have 12 votes today. We may have 12 votes sometime next week. My suggestion would be, since there seems to be some issues that need to be resolved, is that both the Plum and the Arts Health and Humanities Committee have a joint meeting, work these items out. Mr. Burnson, let me run the meeting. And, and bring it back where there's some consensus. Otherwise, there is not going to be the votes to do this today, and there is probably not going to be the votes to pass it next week because of not being 12 members to pass the ordinance. That's just a suggestion, or we can continue with this dialogue today and next week.
Point of information, point of order. I would, we could solve that by somebody withholding, but I'd be very afraid to do that, because the Daily News would probably come out with a story like they did last time, accusing me of blocking the situation on the ethics thing, like they did a couple days ago. So, but that may be the answer, that if somebody wishes to withhold, if somebody wishes to withhold, this would go over one week and then require eight votes. Won't? Oh, urgency? Requires 12 all the time. Okay, well, I guess we just have to continue. When do we show that we'll have 12 votes?
Point.
12 people?
Point of order, Madam?
Yeah, when he finishes.
Okay. We may have 12 votes either Tuesday or Wednesday, we're not sure.
Will we continue it till Tuesday, then, and see what happens?
Point of order, Councilwoman?
Yes. I understood that there was a motion made to approve today items A and B as amended, suggested by the city attorney with, and Ms. Sikowski, that it apply only, that it apply to, or that it not apply to areas where a specific plan has expressly permitted them. And we talked about grandfathering it in, and Ms. Sikowski said she could only think of one that would be grandfathered, and that would be Hollywood, but certainly that can be looked at. I tend to think that's the only one, too, because super graphics are so new, and we haven't had that many specific plans coming through since this new advertising tool came about. But whatever it is, that's the motion that I understood was on the floor, Mr. Chair, and I think Mr. Burnson may not have heard that, and that's the reason, because he's suggesting the exact same thing. So as the member, as the Chair of the Committee, what order are we going to?
Well, we do have.
Deal with this?
We do have that motion, we do have Mr. Hernandez's motion, we have Mr. Fuhr's motion, and so why don't, why don't we hear from a few more speakers, and then we'll determine on.
All right, that will be fine. I ask the question because I don't think, going back to committee, having a joint committee, this is budget time, and we're dealing with the budget, which is superimposed on top of everything else, and I really don't think that there's time for another meeting. I think there's enough consensus around here to do it today.
Mr. Chairman, I did not make a motion, I want to clarify that. I, Mr., Mr. Hernandez made the motion, I merely second it, and it suggests that we, we vote for both, and I think there is consensus.
Okay, thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ms. Sikowski.
I think we, all of the members are telling the President that we have more consensus than he perceives. I think we, we do have consensus. And, and Mr. Hernandez, I think your, your, your reading of the Plum Committee recommendation is right, as we would have been directing the city attorney to do the permanent ordinance. So that's why, as what was represented in A today, is only the ICO with the other direction to the city attorney to bring back the comprehensive ordinance that Ms. Walters has only recommended on super graphics. So we are really in consensus, let's adopt the ICO. It has the hardship exemption for any of those situations that might be urgency right now, until we have the permanent ordinance. The permanent ordinance can come back actually twofold. One, as recommended by Arts Health and Humanity, which is defining super graphics, banning them, and then the ordinance will be coming back with the option, as recommended by the Sign Task Force, with creating either supplemental use districts or specific plans, or allowing the reference to previous specific plans where they were allowed. And I think if the council chooses not to do that, and says, take that exemption out, or take that exception out, we will have that authority. The only other question I have of staff is that in B, the B has ordained or suggested a definition of super graphic. Is super graphic defined in the interim control ordinance, or are we just banning something in an ICO that we haven't defined?
No, we have a definition in the interim control ordinance. It's exactly the same as the suggested definition here, except that we also include in the interim control ordinance under the definition of super graphics, an image projected on a wall.
Great.
And I don't know whether the council would want to include that in this definition as well.
I think we should, because the ICO allows the exception if there's a hardship exemption. So, Mr. President, I think we are ready to vote on A and B, and bring back the second ordinance with all the options that we've discussed.
O ye of great faith, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters, and then Mr. Fuhr.
I took care of my business in the last, in the motion on point of order.
Your stateswoman, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Mr. Fuhr.
What they said.
Wow, we're moving, we're moving quick now. Okay, Madam Clerk, what do we have before us in order of precedence?
You have, oh, Councilmember Pacheco pushed his button.
Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
I just had a simple question. The ICO that we're going to approve today would ban super graphics?
Yes.
Temporarily? Until we develop a game plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And right now, they're allowed, they are allowed under the current structure, scheme of codes?
No, they're not.
So what's the urgency?
Well, if I can answer that, although they're, they're not.
Although they're not specifically allowed, they're not specifically disallowed either. There's ambiguities in the code, and we've been challenged on the issue of whether a supergraphic is the equivalent of a large painted-on-wall sign, or mural sign, I should say. So it's... I think it's important from an enforcement point of view on those that are existing out there and illegal to have that kind of definition. And prohibition, specific prohibition.
All right. I'm going to support the temporary prohibition, but I think we should discuss this whole issue in conjunction with the discussion we're having on billboards. I don't see any distinction between the two forms of advertising. They both utilize large spaces, mostly affixed or joined or next to freeways or high transit areas, so I just want to keep that in mind when we go over the billboard issue, that we also look at the supergraphics in the same context.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, as a procedural matter, we may have 12 members next Tuesday or Wednesday. If we vote on this today, this will be continued one week till next Wednesday. If we go and just continue the item today until next Tuesday, we will have two bites of the apple to try to get it passed next Tuesday or Wednesday, rather than next Wednesday only. And so if I have a motion to continue until Tuesday, we have two shots at passing this. If we vote on it today, the ordinance will be continued one week till next Wednesday, and we have one shot at passing this next week. What is your pleasure, colleagues?
Careful, you'll be accused.
Okay, I have 58 days left. I'm going to request without objection that we continue this item until Tuesday in order that we have two attempts to pass this on an urgency next week rather than one. The reporter and the Daily News make sure they got that straight here in the building. Okay? We have two shots next week to do it then because of council attendance. So without objection...
Mr. Chair, does that mean you're not running for president July 1st?
I'm running from, not for, Mr. Hernandez.
No, I did it for one day.
Okay. So let's continue this until Tuesday so we have a better opportunity to pass this next week. Without objection, that will be the order. Okay. Next items.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items under the council's jurisdiction.
Okay. What I would like to do is before we go into public comment, if Mr. Prince, Mr. Merly, and Ms. Stout are still in the audience for item number 12, this item was continued one week for your information. For public comment, we do have one card from a gentleman who wants to speak in regards to closed session item number 29A. So before we go into closed session to discuss those items, let me ask that Mr. Bert Vorhees, if you would like to come forward and speak in regards to item number 29A, and then if there's any other persons in the audience who want to speak under public comment, now is the time to fill out a card and do so. Mr. Vorhees, are you here? Go right ahead, sir, to the podium right on this side. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chair and members of the City Council, my name is Bert Vorhees, and I represent Sergeant Mitchell Grobson in his effort to get this city to keep promises that it made eight years ago to its gay and lesbian workers. Those are promises which the city's own consultants have said that this city has not kept. Until about 4 o'clock yesterday, I thought that we were on track to get Los Angeles to keep those promises, and I wasn't going to appear here today. I came here today because at 4 o'clock yesterday, I was faxed a letter that apparently you all received the day before, purporting to represent the position that we have taken in response to the city's proposal regarding settlement of this issue, a proposal that we received on April 2nd. That letter completely misrepresents what took place in the meeting that it purports to confirm, and it misrepresents the position that we're taking with the city. In November, the City Council asked us to make a comprehensive proposal that would deal with all of the remaining proposals from the Hartman Report, the outside consultant, as well as any other issues that were necessary to settle this matter, including how such a settlement would be enforced. We did what the city asked. We provided this council a comprehensive proposal. It was full of detail, and it was some 65 to 75 pages long. When it became clear after meeting with your staffs and with you that that proposal was not going to be accepted despite the fact that staff member after staff member told me that the City Council was in support of the basic underlying principles of that proposal, I came before this body and suggested that you send representatives to meet with us to iron out any remaining items. This council sent Councilmember Mishikowski and Councilmember Ridley Thomas to meet with us. At that meeting, the city attorney's office identified two remaining issues, said if we could reach an agreement on those, we could move forward. At the end of that meeting, we had reached an agreement on those, and we began to move forward. Subsequent to that time, we've had lengthy meetings. We have had at least six or seven all-day sessions in which we met with the city's attorneys. We developed more and more details so that at the end of the day, everyone would know that if the city of Los Angeles was going to settle this case, it was going to do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and so on. On April 2nd, following all those meetings, we received the city's counterproposal. The substance in that proposal was about 10 pages long. It was full of holes. It was full of vagaries. For example, the city's proposal says that the city is prepared to adopt, quote, "some but not all" of Mr. Grobson's substantive changes to LAPD training. Which some? What is the city promising to do? The city proposes in the April 2nd proposal to do some additional outreach to gay and lesbian organizations, but it refused to identify which organizations we were talking about. We met with the city attorney's office two days ago, and we discussed general concerns we had about the very skeletal and vague proposal made by the city. And at the end of that meeting, we indicated that we were on board. We were prepared to settle with the city along the lines of what was being outlined so long as we could get the skeletal proposal filled in with sufficient detail that we could meet with our client and get clear yeses and noes to what was being proposed, so long as we understood exactly what the city was proposing. We did not, as this April 2nd... Or as this April 30th letter states, refuse to respond to the city's proposal. And I will say to you again here, we are prepared to settle this case with the city along the lines outlined in the skeletal proposal, so long as we get the detail sufficient to understand before we give a final yes what it is that the city is promising to do. That's our real position, not the position stated here that we refuse to respond. We did not... This letter states that we want from the city a response to our very detailed November proposal, that 65 to 75-page proposal. I've never asked for that. I don't want that. I would have liked that at the time. It would have at least been courteous to do that. We didn't get that. The city said what it could have said in July. We're going to go back to the Sharon Hartman proposal, and we're going to settle the case along those lines. To that, we said, "Okay, tell us what that means with sufficient detail so that we can meet with our client." The kind of detail you asked us to give you and that we gave you. The kind of detail that any attorney demands on behalf of their client before advising them to say yes or no with respect to an issue. That's what we're asking for from you, is to ask the city attorney to give us a detailed proposal with detail like the detail that we gave to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. I have no other cards for public comment at this time, so I am going to ask the sergeants to assist us in preparing the council chambers for executive session. Those persons in the audience who are not party to the executive session items, if you could please excuse yourselves, and we will be back after executive session.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yeah, why don't we take care of some of the housekeeping items as we're clearing the room?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
There's also an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Chuk requests to be excused. City business Friday, May 4th, to leave at noon. A motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez moves. Without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Here we go into executive session. Again, persons not party to the executive session items, would you please excuse yourselves, and we will be back. That item is approved forthwith. Okay, next items.
That clears the desk, Mr. President, and on the record, items 29G through J were continued to May 9th, which is one week.
Yes, the closed sessions that we did not address today will continue until May 9th. Are there any adjourning motions?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
Yes, I have one also.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson for an adjourning motion.
Yes, members of the council, I think some of the Valley members may want to join me on adjourning in memory of Betty Helene Franklin.
Oh, yes.
Who passed away on April 27th. She survived by her husband, Robert, three children, five grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. She's a longtime Silmar resident. She survived... Well, I gave that part. But basically, she was actively involved in her community for most of her adult life. Her volunteer work on various civic projects include impacting Silmar, San Fernando, Los Angeles County. She was recognized by numerous commendation certificates from various agencies of state. But she was a very outspoken person who was very much involved in her community, and she passed away, and she will be missed.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. The first is to ask that we adjourn in memory of Janet Brogan, who is... Who was the mother of Nate Brogan.
Mike, we did that yesterday.
Oh, we did it yesterday?
And it was long.
Okay. The other is Margie Beltran, who I don't think we've adjourned in memory of. I think Mr. Hernandez may be familiar with her work, and I think her surviving family lives in Arlita and Mr. Padilla's district. They might wish to join in this. Margie Beltran, who was a close friend of the family of my staff member, Camilo Cruz, was a leading advocate for Latinos and students of color aspiring to whole careers in health and medicine. She really had a passion to get younger people involved in higher education. She joined the National Chicano Health Organization in Los Angeles. Her activities here led to a full-time position as a student... Director of Student Services, Student Support Services at UC Davis for 12 years, where she was credited with more than doubling the number of physicians from backgrounds of people of color from UC Davis School of Medicine. She's been recognized by legislators and government officials and medical student associations, representing a real breadth of the diversity of our state, from the Latino community, the Filipino community, and the Native American community. She will be greatly missed and had an enormous impact on the lives of a great many people who are now serving others. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, and I'd like to join Mr. Fuhr in that adjourning motion, if I may. Members of the council, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Hector Ignacio Corral. He died of kidney complications on April 28th, and he was 72 years old. He was elected a council member in Chile in 1972 and was president during the coup of Salvador Allende. He spent two years as a political prisoner under the Pedro Che dictatorship, where he suffered through tortures in some of Chile's worst prisons. He came to this country in 1976 as a political exile with his family, and he survived by his wife, Juana, and his children, Lucy, Ignacio, Fernando, Carlos, and Jaime Corral, who happens to be a close friend of many of my staff people. And so I ask that we adjourn in his name.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Harry Blackman, who was a longtime friend of my parents' family, prominent businessman. He sort of began the sort of discount appliance business. Years ago, there was a chain called White Front Stores, and he started the White Front Stores, and he passed at the age of 95 and leaves his wife of 65 years tootsie, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Happy Hairston.
All members.
Yes, was a former UCLA basketball player, former Lakers player, and most recently had been involved in a mentoring program that he set up for inner-city youth. He was... When I was on the school board, he was in touch frequently about what was going on with the kids and how we could better serve the youngsters. He was really enthusiastic about his work with young people. I ask the council to also adjourn in memory of Mrs. Otilia Cotton. She was 79... She was 89 years old at the time of her death on April 27th. She had been a Ninth Council District resident for over 70 years. She was a very active member in the community, and her funeral is next Tuesday, May 8th, at Tinney M. She is survived by her niece, Annie Arrington, and two grandnieces and two great-grandnieces.
Thank you. Are there any announcements before we call the roll? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Seeing no further business, this council is adjourned. Have a good day.